February 17, 2025. If you would stand and we'll ask Terry Hecraft to leave his plea.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Terry. Okay, moving down the agenda, we'll look at approval of the regular meeting minutes from February 3, 2025. One page, that's pretty good, isn't it?
Yeah.
It may be a record.
That's true.
Oh, I have a question, Mayor.
Okay.
So do we have a new Assistant Police Chief?
We do.
Okay, well, that was listed as some of the people who were here, I just wasn't aware.
Yeah, David wanted to put out a press release on Friday.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry, David.
And...
That's fine. We've got one more position we're looking at, Philly, and we was going to release all that on Friday, that's fine.
I didn't say who it was.
That's fine.
So it's still there.
That's fine. That's fine, thank you.
Yeah, David and I just talked about it, he's wanting to do a press release on Friday, and we should have a couple other positions, new positions in place by then, to be able to just do it all at once, so. Okay, if there are no other questions or concerns with the minutes, I'll entertain a motion to approve those. Billy, I have a second.
I second.
Second by Clayton, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Next up is approval and ratification of bills. Pretty big number this month, but... Does anyone have any questions or issues with the bills as they're presented?
I got a question for David there. That, I don't know, it's an outfit of three new Durangoes?
Yes.
Forty-one thousand?
Yes, sir.
It's cost that much?
Yes, yes, sir. Yeah, that was, that was the estimates, that was the estimates they give us on it. That was the quotes, and that was actually, the other quote that I got, there was like, I think, like $200 difference, but we had always used L and W, and that was the one that we was approved to use. Anyone else? Now I'll entertain a motion to approve the bills.
I make a motion, we approve the bills.
Motion by Clayton, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Tootie, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next up, we have visitors, we have Mr. Dennis Fenteras that wants to give us an update on the recreational center and what's going on with that.
Where's he at? Oh, there he is.
Let me adjust the mic here. I just want to update you guys and ask for money, basically boils down to that, they update first. We've got, I was trying to get estimates on the feasibility study, we requested four organizations to provide estimates, of the four, we talked to three, three said they were going to provide estimates on what they would charge to do a feasibility study and also a pro forma study. Only two provided an estimate, and we had interviewed those two here at City Hall. I think, I think everybody on the committee was present at the, at the interview, and after the interview, it was pretty much unanimous, I think, wouldn't it, Mayor?
Yeah.
Pretty much, to go with Pinnacle. Their estimate was twenty-two thousand five hundred. We did a little more investigation, they had done studies for recreation centers in Owensboro, Madisonville, and Bardstown. And Bardstown, we talked with them, and they were extremely pleased with them, and in fact, they had asked them to do their, to run their rec center after they did their study, so told us that they were extremely happy with what they did. So the other stakeholders have agreed to pay a fourth of it, I shouldn't say completely, but the county has, the hospital foundation, the Litchfield Tourism, with the exception of, I think they need $625 more, I think they initially approved $5,000, and it was five, six, twenty-five? And they meet Tuesday. Yeah, but they attempted to agree $5,000, and everybody I spoke with at Tourism said it's just no problem. So it boils down to we're asking the city for the fourth to do the feasibility study, and once they get the study done, then we'll kind of know where we stand. The purpose of the feasibility study, determine if it even is feasible, if they think it's going to work, and give us an idea of what kind of facility they think that we need to do. At that point, if it works out, then the next will probably do the pro forma, and that would provide us what they, what they think would cost to run it, how much revenue we would generate or expect to generate, and determine...
Is that a cost, too?
Yes, that's the cost. And then from that point, if the pro forma comes back with something we think we can live with, then we get the architects involved.
Is it an additional cost, the pro forma, would be an additional cost?
It is, I think theirs was fourteen thousand for them to do it. I think the Pinnacle, they like because they've done a lot of studies and more, I guess the real reason was they've done studies local.
So thirty-six grand?
Yes, and we're asking you guys for a fourth of that. I want to see where we're at.
Did we not already allot money for this?
When I looked at the budget, it's just got like the revenue in it, it doesn't show any expenses.
I was thinking we had talked about it and approved it, too, Terry, and apparently it never made it to the budget side of it, so we would have to amend, probably amend the budget for it. Don't tell Sabrina.
Well, if you're going to do a feasibility test, you're going to be, you're going to do a test that sees what it costs.
Right.
Anyway.
Yeah, but at the budget, I think, didn't we talk about doing, putting money in there for economic development?
I thought we did.
Well, that's what I was getting ready to say, Denny and I talked, and he thought there was money under the economic development, and if that's, we might could move that for...
Yeah.
I think it was related to the interest.
I think you're right.
Because when we talked, you said, yeah, I think that's a good idea, put some for that, from the interest money that's generated from the...
But when I looked at the side notes, it didn't have anything for economic development for that. I think one of them was a grant, and then there was some money for the, I think, I think there's the airport money come out of that. There was something else me and you talked about, but I feel like there's money there once we talk to Sabrina that we might could use.
You guys got any question about, about it? Brittany was supposed to be here, by the way, and she had a kid's function, and she asked me to handle it, but I know the guys are disappointed that Brittany's not here.
Denny, what's the normal results that would come from this study?
What they indicated to us, and Tammy may can speak more to this than I, but I think they indicate they're going to do surveys, both in person and also like electronic stuff to see...
They're going to do some electronic, but a lot of the, where Pinnacle does it, is they do boots on the ground, they meet with people, they talk with them, and instead of just doing all electronic, they do face to face.
So focus groups, stuff like that?
Okay.
And then once they get that information, then they'll kind of be able to have a plan of what they think would work here, if shuffleboard or whatever, you know, they think would work, and then also kind of give us an idea of the cost, and I think they said they even give us an idea of what, how big the facility they think would work. Could you scorch down a little bit? Thanks.
As I said, in Muhlenberg, they really wanted something bigger than what they received, but Pinnacle told them it just wasn't feasible for their area, so that's kind of, I feel...
So you have, you have the hospital, tourism, Litchfield, and the county?
County. Those are the four stakeholders, as we say.
Is something Industrial Foundation's got money for that? Is that the way they choose?
We'd have to ask them, I guess, to see, I don't...
I didn't think about Industrial Foundation.
Denny, will they have a place, probably stupid to ask, but like for a cornhole that they could put a thing in, because we've got a world's champion?
Yeah.
In Grayson County that is, has been world's champion a couple of times, and he said something, we were talking about it, and just want to pay us a place that you could utilize one of the floors for cornhole?
I would think so, again, I'm not an expert in this, but I think if you could do basketball and volleyball?
Right.
And archery and...
Okay.
Tennis and all of that.
Because he was talking about having tournaments come in, and there's a lot of people that plays that and comes in and...
I think that would be great, that's another area that they could generate revenue.
Right.
Just spoke with somebody about archery, and they're, I think they practice at the gym at middle school.
Right.
And they go to tournaments all the time, and that's another area I think would be felt, but again, that's, that's from the feasibility study, gives us a better idea of what they think.
Right.
But I would think cornhole would be something...
So you're wanting a commitment for us for about nine grand? Mayor, you said you thought we could do it without amending the budget?
No, I think we'd have to amend the budget, yeah.
Even if it moves from economic development?
Even if we move it?
If we move it from economic, we wouldn't have to, correct, Lori?
Well, no, we wouldn't, because it's still under the, the city budget part, so...
But I guess right now it's just fifty-six, twenty-five, for now. They're not going to, we're not going to do the, I think the ideal was not to do the pro forma until the feasibility study is done, because if the feasibility study comes back and says, this is not going to work...
I think you're still going to do it.
Well, I agree, but, but that was the ideal, you know, it just, if they say no on the feasibility study, then we'd have to say, do we still want to do this? And if it's no, we don't want to do it, I mean, if a couple stakeholders drop out, you know, and that, that changes things, so, but for now, it's fifty-six, twenty-five, and then we'll just come back, next time will be Brittany, we'll come back and ask for...
There's, there's...
A fourth of fourteen thousand.
Probably a good...
Thirty-five hundred.
Probably, probably the other for the pro forma would fall under next year's budget anyway, from the, from the time, wouldn't you imagine?
Budget for you guys? No, 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 I think they indicated a few months, right?
Well, we're...
That's a few months from now.
That's a few months away.
Oh, that's right, it's middle of the year, it's not the end of the year.
Yeah.
I think we'd be pushing that probably.
Yeah.
By the time they get the, the feasibility done, and you get the report done and all that?
Be really close, wouldn't it?
It'd be close, yeah.
So...
What do you think, guys?
I think we need to go with it. We're going to try to build something, we need to know what we're going to build.
The other thing, I think, and Mayor can speak to this better than I can, but if I remember right, I think the ideal was for them to bill the city, the city would then pay for it, and then the other stakeholders would reimburse the city for their fourth.
Right.
Was that...
That's what, that's what we talked about the other day, that you, that work okay, Lori?
Well, then we'd have to amend the budget for the full amount and bring in the revenue.
I think we talked to Sabrina about it, too.
Yeah, so we, I think we, we really need to involve Sabrina in that, since it's the budget part. I mean, I think there's that much in economic development, because I think the biggest portion of that was some kind of grant expense that, and I don't know that we're getting that grant, but...
And I can...
We'll catch her in the morning and talk to her about that.
Okay, and I can ask the IDC, too, Billy, see if they are going in, making a fifth instead of a fourth, you know, they've got money, so...
So I think we can probably give them a verbal, yeah?
Yeah, I think so.
Pending?
I think, yeah, I think we can go ahead with, if we want to go ahead and approve the fifty-six hundred, I think we've got that, and we can work that out with, with the county or whoever.
And your group's called, what are y'all, how are y'all represented?
I don't even know if we've got a group name.
Recreation Board?
I just call it Brittany's Group. Brittany's Group. That'll work.
Recreation Committee, yeah.
So can you provide us, after this study's done, can you provide the council with what they give you?
Sure, I'd imagine all the spec...
I'd like to see, like, the number of people who were surveyed in their focus groups, I'd like to see how many electronic surveys were returned, and just...
And we can even ask them to make a presentation.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that would probably be the best way of doing it, just have them come down here and ask them to do a presentation and maybe have...
On their findings, and we can get, get everybody involved here, maybe for a meeting one night.
Get all the stakeholders and just say this is what...
I'll make the motion to contribute fifty-six.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Okay.
I second.
To the Recreation Board representing the...
Recreation Center, how, Litchfield Recreation Center, how's that, Litchfield slash Grayson County Recreation Center?
Is that okay?
So I've got a motion and...
Are you, are you, are you asking for the full twenty-one?
Our part, fifty-six hundred?
There's fifty-six right now.
Right? Isn't that what she's asking?
Well, you'll have to have that full amount, if you're going to pay it, then you're basically asking for reimbursement back from the other organizations.
Yeah, that's what we were having a side conversation on.
So they won't collect it and do that, just the same as we would?
Well, we're going to have to write a check out upfront, though, and we can't write that check out unless we have it in the budget.
Let me talk with Judge Henderson tomorrow and see if they, if we might be able to run it through them.
I mean, you could go ahead and...
Their budget may be a little more fluid than ours is.
The county's already committed their part.
Yeah, you just have to approve the full amount, because we got to pay it, and then we get it reimbursed on it.
Right.
That way, Brittany...
And if it's in there, it might just be the, it might, we may not even have to amend if the money's in there, we may just have to say, this was allotted for this, we're going to move it to this?
Yeah.
And just do a internal conversation and vote on it, I guess you'd say.
So how would you like the motion?
You can go ahead and approve it, the fifty-six, what was...
Fifty-six, twenty-five?
Fifty-six, twenty-five.
Fifty-six, twenty-five was the fourth.
Yes.
Twenty-two, five was the entire cost for the study.
So that would be my motion, like I made?
Yes, right.
And it may be that they can bill us, like, as soon as, as soon as they bill us, we can, we can get with this, so we won't have to really take it out of our kitty to put it, we can get it done ahead, you know, ahead of the game.
Yeah.
Get the money in and...
We wouldn't have to do any amendments if we did that, if we, if we had the cash.
If everybody just got the money to us, and we were able to just transfer it without it coming out as a whole payment from us.
Okay.
Well, it still has to be in the budget. Revenue still has to be there, and the expense still has to be there, so...
So you still got to amend?
Then we received it as a revenue, yeah.
Okay.
But like I said, if the money's there, we may not necessarily have to amend it, she may just have to move from one category to another, but at the end, she may have to amend the revenues to include the revenues where we're getting it from.
That we received it to come in.
So we'll, we'll just get with her in the morning, because you all made the motion, right?
Yeah.
We ain't done all in favor yet, but I don't think...
Yeah, Billy made the motion, Clayton seconded.
Right.
All asked now.
And we get more details from Sabrina in the morning.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
Thank you, Denny.
Thanks for your work on this.
Thank you, Danny.
Uh, next up is opening of sealed bids for the sale of property located at Zero Basham Drive. Lori, you have that?
We have a bid here from Warren Barton for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that is the only bid we received.
That, that one fifty, I got with the EDC, or IDC Board, and we had some discussion with that. That price is what the city gave for it in IDC when they bought it. With, they bought it in, in order for the cheese plant to expand.
Right, yes.
And that fell through. Outside of them, there didn't appear to be much way anybody could use it for anything, that's why we didn't get any more bids, I guess. Uh, access to it's not real good, unless you go across cheese plant park, property.
It doesn't even lay good, the terrain of it.
Right, so they felt like, and I felt like that, you know, if we could get our money back, we was doing pretty good on that piece of property, so that's what they agreed to, so...
But they get, they get the money instead of us, though, right?
They get half of it, we bought half and the city bought half, so, be seventy-five apiece.
We'll have to work out the finer details on how that's going to hit the budget, too.
Yeah.
So yours is at fifty-six hundred, huh?
Yeah, yeah. And Dave is, Dave was working on last night, talking, and to beat all of it to the city, and then we received the payment. So it was turning into a monster, trying to figure out how to advertise and how to do all that with them owing half and us owing half, and his, his advice was to, to combine it, sell it like that, and then split the money, so...
I make a motion that we receive that.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Second by Tam, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, guys. Okay, approval of the December 2024 financial statement that was handed out at our last meeting. Anyone have any, any questions or concerns about those, those numbers as they were presented? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Motion by Billy, second by George, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up, I need a motion and a second to move into executive session.
So moved.
Motion by Tam, second by Clayton, all in favor?
Aye.
This is, go ahead, Erle, I'm sorry.
I didn't know if you were going to get, it's in KRA sixty-one point eight ten one C, update on pending litigation, and then KRA sixty-one point eight ten, one add personnel.
All right, we will return. All right. We will return.
I'll entertain motion to come back in regular session.
I make a motion we come back in?
Motion by Clayton, second by George, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next up on the agenda is utility commissioner appointment, new term from 3-1, 2025 to 2-28, 2029. We have had some discussion in closed session about personnel and do you need to say anything before we come back in session?
I was going to do it at the end, but we briefly discussed the pending litigation and I gave a review and update on those pending cases and where they stood, their bits of minor changes in those, and then I'll let you carry on with the update on the discussion on personnel issue.
Okay. We did do or have some discussion about an appointment for the utility commission as I just mentioned from 3-1 to 2029. My recommendation at this time and I will, we will vote on this is to recommend Denver Blaine as the new commissioner for the utility commission. So we'll go with all in favor of sitting Denver on that commission?
We'll need a first and second and then all in favor.
Okay, do we need first and second to do that or to take a vote?
To do that, right. To go forward, you'll need a motion and a second to go forward on the vote.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to go forward with the vote.
I make that motion there.
Okay. Motion by Tim. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Second by Clayton. Okay. So as I said, my recommendation is to appoint Denver Blaine to that position. All in favor of that, please raise your hand. All opposed. Okay. So it's three to three. At that point, it's up to me to break the tie and I am going to vote in favor of Mr. Blaine. Any questions or input from, on that from anyone? All right, let's go down to unfinished business. Billy?
No, sir.
Terry?
Hold on. I'm sidetracked. No.
Okay. Tudy?
No, sir.
Clayton?
No, sir.
Tim?
No, sir.
Lori?
No.
Erle? David?
No, sir.
Tyler?
No, sir.
All right, we'll move on to new business. Billy?
No, sir.
Terry?
That answered tonight. We're dandy.
All right. Okay.
No.
No.
Clayton?
No, I think I've already talked to Wes about everything before the meeting and I'm satisfied.
Okay. George?
No, sir.
Or anybody from the table? Okay.
Hey, David, I do want to say nice cruiser, nice Durango.
Thank you.
It looks really good, it's sleek, it's clean, it's, as I told you before, sometimes you want to be seen because they look so good and then I understand that sometimes you don't want to be so visual or, you know, but good looking, right, I think.
Glad you like it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on down to other business. Michael Simon from KLC will be here on Monday, March 17th at 3:00 p.m. to discuss medicinal cannabis policy. That is a change from the original date.
Yeah, we had originally talked about March 3rd, but by the time I got back to him, he had already booked that date with another city, so I just went ahead and kept it for a city council night. That way we don't have to bring everybody in on a different day, so.
Okay. The chamber lunching for March will be 13th at noon. Please let Lori know, no later than noon on Monday, March 10th if you plan to attend. And before the next meeting, there will be a solid waste committee meeting, March 3rd at 5:00 p.m. Thank you. at 5:00 PM. Is there anything else anyone has? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Other than wishing George Hack a 66th, happy birthday.
Thank you, Clayton. Did you birthday today, George? Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
39 and holding.
And for that, I will present you with a license, once you get that.
All right. After George's happy birthday, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion by Clayton, second by Tootie.